Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Babylon Planning Board. Today is the 3rd of February 2025. We do have one public hearing. So we will begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Could you all rise? Ed, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take the roll. Take the roll.
Patrick Calvin.
Present.
Leanne Nolan. Gary O'Neil.
Present.
Edwin.
Present.
Juan Leon.
Present.
Dan Chucon.
Present.
Frank Santos. Rich Gro.
Present.
Brad Gexiola.
Present.
Matt Esposito.
Present.
Rich Casey.
Do we have a quorum? Okay, we have a quorum. Before we start the public hearing, I'm required to read this statement into the record. The planning board shall have the right to rely on any information that is presented by the applicant. If any such information is later found to be inaccurate or incorrect, the planning board may determine that any approvals, building permits, or other actions previously granted in connection with the application are null and void.
Item A, Public Hearing, Site Plan Review, Job 2124A, Pablo Tupachek. Purpose: To construct a 5,032-square-foot footprint, three-story, mixed-use building for three commercial tenants, one retail and two office on the first floor, 19 apartments, six studios, and 13 one-bedrooms on the second floor and third floors. Legally maintain an existing three-car garage within an office above and associated site improvements.
Okay, who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Nicole Blanda. I'm an attorney at Bizel, Blanda, and Visconti with offices at 535 Broad Hollow Road in Melville. We have reviewed the planning department memo to this board, and we have consent to the conditions and covenants and restrictions that are being requested.
So you have reviewed this carefully with your client? Okay. Thank you. And they have no objections?
No objections.
Or concerns? All right, please proceed.
I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant to present this mixed-use project for site plan approval that has been substantially scaled back since the prior hearing before this board. The property is located on the west side of Great Neck Road, just 65 feet south of Oak Street in the downtown Copeg district. It has a lot area of 25,095 square feet, which is just slightly over half an acre, and it has 145 feet of frontage on Great Neck Road. Presently, there is an existing two-story building located in the westerly portion of the property along that property line that has a garage on the first floor and an office above. It's approximately 21 by 42. Prior to me being involved with this project, this application was presented to this board at a public hearing held back in October of 2023. That version of the project was larger in scope, and there are some important differences between that proposal and the proposal that we're here on tonight. These changes were made as a result of feedback both from the community, the planning board, and the planning department. So I want to first point out a few things about the original application so that everyone can kind of get a feel for the comparison. Originally, the applicant was proposing a 6,932-square-foot, three-story, mixed-use building that would have four commercial tenants within the building and 25 apartments. That proposal exceeded the allowed density for this zone. A project with this lot area in this zone would be permitted to have 20 units as its max density. So at the time, the project was five units over. The prior proposal also had a greater parking requirement as a result of the four commercial tenants and the 25 apartments, and at that time would have required a 15-car parking variance. I'm happy to say tonight that the applicant has substantially pared back, and I think that you'll see that in the project. So the proposal before you tonight has several key changes. First, the footprint of the building is 1,900 square feet smaller, at 5,032 square feet. Essentially, if we look at the site plan, a portion of the first floor of the building that was originally proposed running along the northerly property line has been eliminated. By doing so, the second change, by doing so, the applicant has eliminated one of the commercial tenants that was proposed to be in this building. So now there is only a proposal for one retail space and two small offices rather than four commercial tenants. Third, the applicant has significantly reduced the density to actually be below what is permitted. 20 units would be permitted, and the applicant is now proposing 19. The 19 units would be comprised of six studios and 13 one-bedroom units. Fourth, as a result of removing one of the commercial tenants, removing square footage from the building, removing apartment units, the parking requirements have been significantly reduced and managed. So instead of being short 15 spaces, the applicant only requires a parking waiver for three spaces, which is well within the limits of the code's provision, which allows for a 20% waiver if an applicant can demonstrate shared parking within the community. Fifth, as a result of feedback, we are showing a loading area now for the proposed deli that runs north to south along the portion of the building where the deli would be located. Now, having this loading area does eliminate two spaces that we were originally proposing. However, we do understand the feedback, and we want to assure the board and the community that deliveries would not be happening on Great Neck Road, and so the loading area proposed behind the building, we believe, will mitigate that circumstance. So what's staying the same? The existing three-car garage with an office above will remain and is not changing. Ingress and egress to the site will remain through two curb cuts. One curb cut is on Great Neck Road and is just south of the proposed building. This leads into the site where you'll see there's parking directly behind the building, including handicap spaces. Immediately after the handicap spaces, you see the loading area that I was talking about, and then additionally three parking spaces. In the central portion of the site, there is more parking. In the southwest corner of the site, there is a refuse enclosure proposed to town specs. Then we have the three-car garage with the office above, and as you circulate the site, you can also access a 20-foot-wide easement that leads out a curb cut through that lot next door out onto Oak Street. All site lighting proposed will be dark sky compliant, and if we look at the floor plans, I can take you through how the building will be structured. So within the three-story building, we're proposing a deli on the first floor, which is about 2,521 square feet, along with two small office uses, 969 square feet each. The deli is a deli/market in that it has display shelves for goods, there's self-service areas to get coffee, tea, there's a salad bar, there's a hot food station. Then you see a counter for where you would check out, and in the rear of the deli is where the food prep happens along with two walk-in refrigerators. There is also a door that leads to the outside of the deli onto the sidewalk, and that's where one could access the loading area so all deliveries can be taken within the rear and not on Great Neck Road. The other two uses on the first floor are offices. Right now, they're shown as what we call in the industry a vanilla box because they would be built to suit the end user that would go there. Right now, we're not sure who would be there. The deli is pretty certain because right now they are a tenant of the applicant at another site, and they're very eager to relocate to this site. There is a small RPZ room that will be on the first floor. Right now, I believe it's labeled as a mailroom. There was a discrepancy, and we're getting that fixed. So the mail will be somewhere else on the first floor. The architect is working on relocating that. Then you have an elevator shaft as well. This building will have security cameras, and each tenant will have its own key fob to get into the building. As we move to the second floor, we find the apartment units. So there's a gym area for the tenants, which is a nice amenity on the second floor. There are also seven one-bedroom apartments and three studio apartments, as well as a tenant storage area so that any extra belongings that they have, they can store amongst the apartments right there where Mr. Esposito was pointing. In addition to the elevator shaft, you also have a stairwell for ingress and egress that's located on the other side of the building and goes right down to the parking lot. On the third floor, there are nine apartments, six one-bedrooms, three studio apartments, and again, there's a tenant storage area and another, what we're calling another amenity room, which right now is labeled as a Pilates studio. It might have weight equipment. It's nice to have each floor have its own personal gym for the residents that are living there. For the small, existing two-story building, in terms of how that is laid out for floor plans, on the first floor, there's basically a three-car garage. The doors will be removed, and so there are three parking spaces within that building. There's a small lobby and a bathroom, and then you go upstairs, and there'll be two offices. This office space will be used by the property owner themselves. They're a husband-and-wife team. They want to use it as their real estate management office. There is an area being shown as an open area. They plan on having a conference room table, some file storage, things of that nature. They just haven't, they're not going to be putting up walls in that area, so that's why you don't see a build-out. It's more of an open floor plan so that they can use it for what they feel they need in terms of managing their real estate. In terms of the parking waiver that we're seeking tonight, the parking requirement for this site is 31 spaces, and we are providing 28 onsite spaces. Two traffic engineers have reviewed this project, one on behalf of the town, and that's Cameron Engineering. When this project started back in 2021, they issued their initial memo and analysis of the site and requested that the applicant provide a full traffic study as well as a parking study. The applicant then went and hired Nelson &amp; Pope to prepare such a study, and that original traffic study was prepared in 2022. After that study was completed, Cameron, again on behalf of the town, reviewed that study, was satisfied with that study, and felt there was no mitigating factors necessary as a result of the, what's peak demand, the parking that was required, things of that nature. Since we have changed the project and reduced, we did have another parking study prepared, and I do have our traffic engineer here with me tonight from Nelson &amp; Pope to discuss the parking study and discuss the parking waiver in more detail. This board might be familiar with the shared parking analysis that's allowed under the downtown code, that if you meet certain criteria, namely being within 500 feet of on-street parking or a municipal lot, you can, at the discretion of the board, get a 20% credit reduction in parking. In our situation, that would amount to three spaces. Very similar or exactly the same as another project that this board might recall at 463 Oak. That was Kaz Galabuski. He received a parking waiver in the fall of 2023 for three spaces. He has not built his project, and I believe he's actually abandoned the project, but there is precedent for granting such a parking waiver. So before going any further into anything else with the project, I wanted to allow our traffic engineer to discuss the parking study.
Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Osman Barry, 70 Maxis Road, Melville, New York.
Could you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Osman Barry, a licensed traffic engineer with the firm Nelson &amp; Pope with offices at 70 Maxis Road in Melville, New York. Nelson &amp; Pope was retained to conduct a traffic and parking assessment for the proposed mixed-use development. The applicant is proposing to construct a mixed-use development that will comprise of 19 apartments, 2,500 square feet of retail space, and 2,800 square feet of office space. Based on the town code, the project will require 31 parking spaces, and the plan depicts a total of 28 parking spaces provided. Therefore, we are requesting a parking variance for three parking spaces, which is equivalent to 10%. Based on the town of Babylon zoning code, District Shared Parking Section 213-548B, it is permissible to reduce the off-street parking by up to 20% if shared parking is located within 500 feet of each use, and it may include on-street parking, off-street parking, and communal parking. Applying this reduction will bring the total required parking spaces to 25, which is three parking spaces fewer than the 28 spaces provided. Thus, the parking spaces provided, the 28 parking spaces provided, not only meet but exceed the requirement, demonstrating compliance with the code under District Shared Parking Section 213-548B. In order to further support our request for the parking variance, a shared parking analysis was conducted based on data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Parking Generation publication. Shared parking is the use of a parking space to serve two or more individual land uses without conflicting or encroaching. For instance, the parking for retail uses may peak during the day, while the parking for residential uses may peak during the night. Based on this analysis, the parking for the residence, the parking demand for the proposed mixed-use development actually came out to 19 spaces, which is way lower than the 28 spaces we provide in, based on ITE. And to further support this request, we collected parking counts within the 500 feet of the section to the proposed use development. The counts were conducted on the municipal lot across from the street, across from the site, and the street in close proximity of the site. The counts were conducted on a typical weekday and a Saturday from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Based on the results of the data, there were at least 49 spaces available in the area at any given time of the day. The number of off-street parking spaces available exceed the variance for three parking spaces being requested. Based on our observations and analysis, it is my professional opinion that the 28 parking spaces provided not only meet but exceed the requirement, demonstrating compliance with the code under District Shared Parking Section 213-548B. That ends my presentation. I will gladly answer any questions that the board might have.
Do any board members have any questions of the gentlemen? No? No questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So essentially, the major crux of this application and our proposal tonight is the substantial changes that we've made. I know that the board, I'm sure you recall the public hearing back in 2023. I'm sure the residents recall it as well. We are, again, below the density permitted. We've reduced to 19 units. We've taken away a commercial tenant. We have added parking by doing so. We've removed close to 2,000 square feet of the building. We do believe that this is a much stronger application and is still in the spirit of the downtown Copeg code, and what it is looking for, what it's seeking to do, being in this zoning district, presumes some transit-oriented development. And we do think that, given what was there on this site and what and how it is right now, that this will be a positive upgrade for the site. For the surrounding area, immediate surrounding area, directly across Great Neck Road to the east, is the municipal parking lot that we were just discussing that does have 40 parking spaces within it. Also across the street are commercial uses, including a small strip center that has commercial uses in it. To the north of our site is a shopping strip center, again, with various commercial uses, and to the south is another DC-zone property that is a commercial shopping center that has parking right in front of it. So every property that touches our property is zoned downtown Copeg. And within the traffic studies that were submitted to the planning department and also to Cameron, within that parking study, you'll see the areas that were discussed in terms of where we were looking for the on-street parking and where we were looking at the municipal lot so that you can see it was within a 500-foot radius. So I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have, or if you want to call me back up at another time.
Okay. Do any of the board members have any questions at this time? Yes, counsel.
Ms. Blanda, in regard to the parking waiver, have you identified specific, in the parking site, specific lots, and are any cross-access agreements complicated for those lots? And also, are there any techniques being employed to encourage shared parking and ride share or reduce parking?
So in terms of, I'll kind of break up your question there, right, a little bit. So in terms of cross-access, I believe you're talking about future cross-access with the budding properties? Was that the question?
Yes.
Okay. So yes, we are in agreement that we will put a covenant on the property that we are open to future cross-access to the tax map lots that are directly to the south of us, which I believe is actually specifically in the memo as condition, or maybe it's covenant number... Number 23 is the condition, that we will provide a future cross-access covenant restriction for lots 45.8 and 45.1. So that would encourage, if that parcel came in, the idea is if it came in in the future looking for development of any kind, then that would bring that, those owners to the table. And I would presume the town would also require them to engage with such a covenant, and then because we already have a covenant on our property, we would be obligated to have that cross-access opened up. And so then that could, in theory, at that point, help with parking for both sites if that, if either of those properties were developed in the future differently than they are now. Does that answer that cross-access question?
The other question was, anything done on-site to promote reduction in parking demand, whether it's ride share or any other techniques, priority to spaces or anything to encourage the walkable concept?
Sure. So there is the required bicycle rack that's being proposed. I believe it's within the area of the resident's staircase, that stairwell that comes down. So that promotes some of that, you know, non-vehicle-using transportation to and from the train station. There will be discussions with the tenants that reside there. I mean, there are studio apartments here. So when you have a studio apartment, you are looking, obviously, at a smaller unit, tends to be a single person, and there will be conversations with the tenants regarding the number of cars that would be permitted as part of the leases. So in other words, each lease would be tied to, you know, maybe they would have one of those stickers that go on your windshield and say that you're entitled to this spot or that spot, that sort of thing. And then I would imagine the leases for the office and the deli might, they might ask for a specific parking for their employees. So that can be worked out. It just has to be, they have to see who's actually taking those spaces.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions at this time? No? Okay. Thank you. Let's hear from the folks that are here.
George Schoenwalder, come up.
Welcome. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
George Schoenwalder, Jr., and my office building is at 305 Montauk Highway, Copeg.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Should.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay. Well, it's nice all the parking that they have, but over the last couple of years, they built several apartment buildings on Great Neck Road, Oak Street, and I drive these roads every day. You don't even dare try to go up Great Neck Road at 7:30 from, you know, Montauk Highway up to Sunrise Highway because you're bumper-to-bumper. Oak Street is the same way. It's clogged from Great Neck Road to Duval. You can't, you can't even move. So, and in the evening, around from 3:00 to about 5:00, you can't even turn from Dixon onto Great Neck Road. That's how crowded it is, you know. So I just feel, you know, putting an apartment building there, we have so many new apartment buildings going up there, it's overrun. And my opinion, they should make a park out of it for all the other apartments. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for coming tonight.
Frank Giaruso?
Sir, again, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Frank Giaruso, 395 Grant Avenue in Copeg.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
All right. I'm here representing the Copeg Fire Department, the City Action, the Copeg Fire District, and the Copeg Fire Department. I have two aspects of this building going up in town. First, I'm going to go on the, on the response area for the members in the department. I belong to this department now for probably a little more than 50 years, no, 53 years, actually.
All right. How many years have you been on the?
53.
You've been 53?
53, yes.
You just, how old are you?
I'm 65. I started when I was 13.
You started when you were 12, okay.
I was 13 years old when I joined the fire department. Yes, I was.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
In all seriousness.
Over the time that I belonged to the department, I've responded to the firehouse on Oak Street, on Great Neck Road and Dixon Avenue. Now, on a normal 10:00, 11:00 call at night, I can get from my house to the firehouse in probably about three minutes, tops. However, like the gentleman just said before, between 3:30, 3:00, and maybe 7:00 at night, it takes me four traffic lights to get through Oak Street, which is, if you figure, I'll go at night, what, a minute apiece is already four minutes. Four minutes to get from Oak Street to Dixon Avenue, which is another, I'm going to say, a light, seven minutes. Then to get in the truck, and being a little bit older, I'm doing a lot of driving now, to get in the truck and start to come back on Great Neck Road if we have to go to the south end of town. Like the gentleman said a little while ago, to get onto Great Neck Road is a disaster off of Dixon Avenue. Yes, we have lights, we have sirens. However, because of the amount of traffic that's on that roadway between those hours, the cars have nowhere to go. They can't pull over to the right. And with the way this newfangled driving, people pull out into the side streets and sit in the middle lane and then cut everybody off to try to get in. Our middle lane is cut off. So the response times have started to go a little bit higher, and rightfully so, because people can't get to the firehouse to get the trucks out. And once we get there, we can't get to where we have to go because the traffic is atrocious coming both ways. And if you look at it in a normal citizen's way, think about your child or your mother or father having a heart attack, or even better, your bedroom having a little fire in it, and you call the fire department, and rather than us get there in five or six minutes, it's taken us 10 or 12 minutes. And that seven or eight minutes that we're being delayed, that little bedroom fire is now out the door into your living room. And it's not our own, it's not our fault. We just cannot feasibly get to where we need to be quick enough because of the overburden of traffic on Great Neck Road. That's that part of it. For the fire district part of it, the financial part that is doing Copeg in, we have built, off my hand, I believe it's five multiple dwellings in Copeg over the last six, five or six years on both ends of town. You're building another one, you're proposing this one, you already started building one on Great Neck Road and Marconi Boulevard. Our responses over the years have gone through the roof, specifically more so with rescue calls than fire calls. I'll give it that much. A big burden is the buildings that you're building. The buildings that you guys allowed them to build on Marconi Boulevard a few years ago, 54, 50, Railroad Avenue, I apologize, 54 and 56 Railroad Avenue. We are constantly making runs to 54 and 56 Railroad Avenue. To the point where it dwindled down our EMS system... To the point where it dwindled down our EMS system because people just cannot keep up with the amount of responses that they're responsible for, which in return, we had to go out and hire EMTs and paramedics to supplement our EMS system, which cost the taxpayers more money because every year it goes up higher and higher that we have to pay their, their salaries and what have you. Another building this size is gonna increase our responses, and it's gonna, it's gonna be more of a taxing on the, on the fire district. We're not getting anything out of this. You guys, or, or your board is allowing people to build all over Copague. What are these people or these, these buildings or this, what have you, doing for the people of Copague? They're doing nothing but raising their taxes because we can't afford to keep up with the service, because we have to hire people, because the, the response calls are going up, our response times are going up, which when we get to places people are yelling at us because they're telling us it took too long to get to where we have to go, and every one of these aspects are out of our hands because we just keep increasing the number of people that we're putting into this town by putting all these buildings up. We have to stop at some point and say enough is enough, this is not Queens, New York, we do not have four-lane highways in the middle of Copague. We can't, excuse me, we cannot burden any more apartments in this town. I appreciate your time and I thank you.
Oh, thank you for coming out this evening.
Sue Giaruso?
On the other half.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Susan Giaruso, 395 Grant Avenue, Copague.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
Couple of questions I have on the traffic plans for the entry and exit, in and off of Great Neck Road. They spoke about a south-facing exit, what about coming in? If you're coming in heading south, how are you coming in? How are you exiting? If you plan on exiting that apartment building and making a left to go north up Great Neck Road, you're gonna have to cross across both lanes of traffic. It's a nightmare going up there, as my husband just said. Everybody's already parked along Great Neck Road, and the traffic is bumper-to-bumper. It's gonna cause more of a nightmare, it's gonna cause more of a gridlock. That's one of them. How are they gonna, how are you gonna handle the traffic directly on coming out? Are you going to have an egress going out onto Oak Street? You're gonna have loading on Oak Street, Oak Street is already backed up. I work for New York State Senator Wyke, we have constituents calling consistently that the turning light at Great Neck and Oak lasts two cars. So the traffic is backed up almost to Lafayette. How is somebody gonna make a delivery to the deli if they can't get in? Their truck's gonna be blocking more traffic. You only have parking along Oak, um, Oak Street for five or six cars in front of where the barber shop is, the jewelry store, and then it's traffic. There is no egress, there is no entry for there. This hamlet is small, it's 3.2 square miles, 3.2 square miles, that's it. We're increasing tremendously the amount of residents that we have in here, and as my husband said, the infrastructure can't support it. What are we doing about the schools that are directly, not directly, catty-corner from these apartments? How are we making sure that our walking elementary school students are safe? You've gotta have people coming out of these apartment buildings at all different times. There's not enough parking in Copague. When you talk about the shared parking, the shared parking waiver, and it's up to 20% within 500 feet, that corner lot on the corner of Great Neck and Oak, which is on the east-south side of Oak?
Could you pull that up, so we could, so we can look at exactly what you're talking about?
Thank you. That parking lot is filled nine out of 10 times. The aerial photo does not do it justice. If you're gonna say that the, the people who have the businesses right across the street, you've got Albert's Pizza, you've got the Polish Deli, you've got the nail salon, that they're gonna let the residents park in their parking behind there, you got another thing coming to you, because they won't even let you park there if you know them, and to say, "I'm gonna hop on the train, do you mind if I park here for a little while?" Absolutely not, because that value, that real estate there is valued so highly. So I don't know where this parking is coming from. Will there be enough handicap spots for people? You're saying one or two spots, that's not enough for the amount of people that are coming in there? You're, you're gonna need a handicap spot for the deli. The proposal didn't say anything about the three-car garage staying as a retail space. So you're gonna have two offices in there, which means more cars for in there. You have a car for each employee and any clients that come in for there. You know, it's a lot. Even if you guarantee one car per resident, that's 19 residents, 19 more cars, depending on the retails that go in there, what kind of traffic are we gonna have from those retail spaces? Are you gonna put in a business that is gonna take off? Be great for a business in Copague to take off, that would be great for the town, it would stink for traffic, because then that business owner isn't gonna survive because people are gonna, not gonna be able to get in or get out. So I would say with all due respect, please reconsider this application, just based on, on what the three of us have said so far, and I'm sure there are many other neighbors here who would like to voice their opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Donna Farina?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Donna Farina, 370 Florida Avenue, Copague, New York.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
Okay. I am also the president of the Copague Chamber of Commerce. As you know, the Copague Chamber represents the businesses in our area, and I am all for businesses coming to our area, new ones, old ones, whatever's there. I'm here to represent them and promote them. But there's a few things, I, first of all, I backed up what everybody just said, so I don't have to repeat it, but the back area where she said about the loading dock, now I work at Blizzard Fence, which is right on Great Neck Road, which is just a little bit north of this, one block over. There are constantly tractor-trailers and box trucks delivering right in front of these stores, so I think they're going to deliver in front of this area, and if they do go around the back, how are they gonna swing these big tractor-trailers and garbage trucks around Oak Street into the back of this building? I don't know if they even considered that. The parking lot across the street, that is where I park, and at one point, we were getting ticketed if we were over four hours over there, but that, they kinda calmed down with that, the town. But the businesses do need that area, you do have the, what Sue just said, all those businesses do park there, especially on the weekend, that thing is packed. They wanna make things walkable, so you get off the train, you come home. I'm looking for like restaurants, eateries, something of that nature to be in the downtown area. Now, you come off that train at 7 o'clock at night, there is nothing there for them to come off and pick up dinner, or whatever it may be. So that is what I would love to see, is something in that nature more of. Now, I do keep in touch with a lot of these landlords, a lot of the management companies with these empty buildings, to know what is going on. Are the Rite Aid building, there's one on Montauk Highway, just to get their feedback. They still don't know what they're putting there, but I keeps telling them, "What about a restaurant, what about this, what about that?", and they keep telling me that the demographics are not there. So they, and on the flip side of that, people from the town say, "Well, if you get the apartments, that'll bring in the restaurants", but we're not getting anything. So I just don't understand this whole equation. But, and for the fire department and the schools, that's another consideration, so that's basically it, really, honestly, so, thank you.
And thank you for all you do for the chamber.
Thank you.
I'm Michelle Warford.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Michelle Warford, 21 East Gate in Copague.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please proceed.
I actually live right down that dead end, which makes it very difficult to get in and out. I have no choice, I have no back way in, so I actually have to go through Great Neck Road, and in that median, a lot of people will cut down from Scudder if the traffic is too full to try to make that turn to go west onto Oak Street, and I've had some near head-on collisions just trying to turn left onto my block. And I feel like with an apartment, and like everyone's been saying with the traffic, I feel like it's gonna be more so while people are also trying to make the left out of that apartment complex to go north on Great Neck Road. So I feel like it's a safety issue, it's a hazard, and I, I see everyone else is complaining about the same thing. I mean, I'm not opposed to like what most people said about commercial real estate, but more apartments. I've been a 15-year resident of Copague, and I have seen so many apartments that it's hard to believe we live in the suburbs. I always joke around and say Great Neck Road is like Jamaica, Queens, because that is what it's starting to feel like. So I would hope that they would reconsider this and maybe downsize it, or maybe just commercial property versus more apartments, or relocate the apartments. I mean, it's too congested in that area as it is, especially on Oak Street going west, that's all commercial area, so there's, it's very congested. You go there during rush hour or just on a Saturday, it's very hard to get up and down those roads, and now we're adding more apartments, which is gonna add more cars. So I just hope that they take that into consideration, given that, you know, the residents that live in the area, I'm very close to where this complex is, and it's already a nightmare getting home that often, I don't even leave on the weekends because it's so hard to get out of my block. So I just hope that they would reconsider it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
William T. Rodriguez?
Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, William Rodriguez, 66 Williams Street, just like my name, in Copague.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth?
I swear to tell the truth.
Please proceed.
I didn't write this down, but just while, while I'm looking at it, if you look at that parking lot above the public parking space, it looks kinda empty there, that building in the corner, you can see how filled that parking spot is, and that was taken, I would say, mid-morning because there's no traffic. Just imagine that on a Saturday, or, you know, in the middle of the day when it's really busy, how full that parking spot is gonna be. So I understand that they're planning on possibly using that for the new building, but just look at that example up on the top of that, that image. Also, on the left side of the screen, there's that, I'm not sure what that building is, the one with the black top, that whole parking lot across the street that goes behind, behind the houses, all that parking lot is for that one building, and look at the comparison of that building size in comparison to this area, and how much parking they need. Doesn't really add up. Also, the traffic study, I remember, I was here last time that they were here, and I think that traffic study was, they said, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they said it was done like on a Saturday or Sunday, early in the morning or something, which doesn't make sense. You know, like most of us, most of them have already said, you do a traffic study, you do it between 7 and 8 o'clock in the morning, or between 5 and 6 o'clock in the afternoon, and you're gonna see, you know, a difference between 10% and 90% traffic. I drop off my daughter every day at the high school in the morning, and it can literally take me 15 minutes from Williams Street, which is just down the street from what you can't see there, to the Copague High School. Now, on the, you know, on the way here, which was, you know, was just at the end of the traffic, it took me about, you know, five minutes. So you can see the difference. Also, on the floor plan, there's a gym downstairs, I believe, on the second floor, and there's a possibility of another gym or some other area which currently is open. What guarantees do we have that that, they're not gonna convert that into a three-bedroom apartment? Because right now, they're not too sure what they're gonna do with that area. As you already know, because I see, I always see the videos, residents or homeowners have a tendency of taking any little area that they have and converting it into an apartment. What guarantees do we have that they're not gonna do something like that here? Maybe convert both gyms into a large apartment, which now increases the parking and the traffic. Also, as somebody might have mentioned before, what guarantees do we have that they really are gonna use that loading dock for loading? You know, how, how are they gonna make sure that these trucks are pulling into there and assuming they can actually get in there? Because obviously, if they're gonna, they can't come in through Oak Street because there's too much traffic. Somebody said it would take about five minutes, and it's backed up to Lafayette. I go down, obviously, I can't take Great Neck Road, when I'm coming from work, I take Oak Street, and I never go down, up, down to Lafayette. Lafayette's the last street that I could make a right before getting to my house. I have to turn either on Duval or on the street before that to avoid the traffic, because otherwise, from that, from there to my house, it would take me 10 minutes, and I could literally walk faster at that point. They mentioned with the building to the bottom, to the south right now, that in the future, they, they have a possibility of opening that up, depending on what type of building or what type of infrastructure might be built there.
Matt, could you pull up the building again, if you don't mind, please? Yeah, what he's referring to?
The site plan, yes.
Okay, the site plan, yeah.
There. So, I agree, if they, depending on the building or whatever that they build there, whenever they do that, if they, if they do that, it can help with the parking. But right now, there's no plans, I'm never tearing down the, the buildings that are there currently, but then, as well as it can help, it can also make things worse, because depending on what structure is built there in the future, that can, instead of be, use less parking, it can use more parking. So that's a double-edged sword, so I wouldn't consider that to be a helpful thing until that is actually done. And then, you know, just to reiterate what everybody has said, the amount of buildings, you know, I was born on Copague Place, which is down the street from where I live now, and I, my parents have been here since the 60s. The amount of buildings that have been built here is, I understand this, it's a public space, and you can't build houses, you have to make a building, but I really think that you, as a board, should consider and take more in consideration the actual people who paid most of the taxes in the town, you know, us the homeowners, because it's just too many. A, a building, I'm not sure how much they pay in taxes, but I'm sure that you compare one of these buildings to probably 10 of our houses, and they're not paying as much as we are. We're paying the taxes, we're paying all this traffic, we're paying, you know, for the fire department and all, and the cleaning of snow and what, whatnot. Like I said, I understand that a public space has to be done with a public building, but it's a, a little too much, I think, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that is our last registered speaker. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board who hasn't spoken at this time? Sir, come on up. Take your time.
I'm ending right down, I'm sorry.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Sir, my name is Joseph Godjula, I'm at 63 East Hollywood Avenue in Lindenhurst. I'm also on the Board of Chambers.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Before you go anywhere, you can speak now, but Matt will give you a, is there a?
I'm sorry.
A thing for you to fill out? No, you don't have to do that.
See, I don't listen well.
No, that's okay, but do it after, but we just wanna make sure we have your spelling and everything correct.
I'm also on the Board of Chambers with Copague. We're doing a lot for this Copague, we support businesses, we're not dense businesses, but she's saying another deli, how many more delis do we have? We have five delis less than 10 feet from each other. The parking is bad, I don't know if you guys know it, I own a big tow truck company in Suffolk County, that, that corner's already marked as a black spot. How many people in the years died over there, accidents every day, that I gotta pick up? So when he does his study, how come he doesn't say that? That's what I'm saying, Mitch's Genie's building one next down the block, that's also a black corner. I mean, it's just getting better and better in Copague. We're all, 40 apartments, but there's no parking. Right now, if you go there, that, the lot that's being wannabe built, he's got all illegal trucks there, looks like a crap yard for Copague. We're trying to fix up downtown Copague, but right now, all them are legal trucks in that lot, and nobody's doing nothing about it. That's hurting all that place, we're trying to build up Copague, and I'm there 55 years. Just, I wanted to mention, when they do their study, how come they don't mention it's a black corner for accidents? That's 5, 6 o'clock, you know how many trucks I roll out every day in that corner? It's impossible. Like he says, the fire guy, it's impossible to get on that tree to clear the roads. That's all we're here for, all right? I appreciate you listening to me.
Well, thank you for coming, and please fill that out and give that to Matt. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board regarding this application? Come on up. Come on up. Okay, and you also have to fill out the, and then give that to Matt. So please state your name and address for the record.
Shelby Haines, 203 Duval Boulevard in Copeg.
Do you swear to tell the truth? The whole truth is nothing but the truth. Please proceed.
I live off of Duval, and I work, and I pick up my brother up in the high school. I refuse to go through Copeg from 7:00 o'clock to 8:00 o'clock and 2:00 to 3:00. Getting off of Oak Street is a nightmare, and I refuse to do it. I will go through Amityville, I will shoot directly down into Lindenhurst. That, the new apartments along the railroad strip, a lot of close calls have happened. I've watched it like as people have jetted out, they've made lefts, and it's not safe for any of us. We're just trying to get home, kids are trying to walk. With that being across the school from elementary school, how much construction traffic is there going to be? I know with the potential apartments up by the post office, I would not feel comfortable with my brother walking there. I don't get busing. I miss the bus by two houses, and it's not something you want, like your high school or even middle school kids walking in at 6:00 o'clock in the morning. As well, when was that study done, the traffic study?
All those questions that have been asked by you and others, we will ask the attorney those questions so we get her responses for the record and they're documented. So that's a good question, we will ask that of the attorney.
That was it.
Okay, fill out that, I'm sorry, I just wanted, only one time. No, just fill that out, you can sit down if you want, make yourself comfortable. I think there's a clipboard. All right. Anyone else that would like to address the board regarding this application? All right. Sir? Hold on. Come on up, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Thomas Colallo, I live on Ferndale, 304 Ferndale Court, Copeg.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth is nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
Okay. Well, in regards to the traffic, it is impossible to get down Great Neck Road. I've been with my friends who've had accidents. I mean, you get backed up all the way to Dixon Avenue for crying out loud, and it's a mess, all the way from Marconi to Great Neck Road. Good luck, you'll be sitting there for like 10 minutes sometimes to go through the lights. And coming on Oak Street, when you're going eastbound, you just, there's nowhere to go. You have to go down the side street, and everybody goes down the side street, and there's people, and then they got to stop, and they go through the stop signs. It's going to be a mess, it really is. It's, I know, it's dangerous. I don't know who drives in Copeg every day. But the traffic study, I don't know who's doing the traffic study, but it's just, it's not feasible. It really, you know, my wife's a closing guy, she just retired. And her school, Duval, is overcrowded already, and we need, we don't need more apartments. I don't, I'd like to see restaurants or, you know, like more nightlife, like maybe Bay Shore and Babylon have. But Copeg is like, they're just building apartments everywhere. It's kind of out of hand, I think, you know? And that's, you know, that's really all I got to say, you've already heard it already.
All right. No, we appreciate you coming out tonight, please fill out that.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
That information, and we appreciate you coming out, okay. Let's see, I think that is our last. Ms. Blanda, as soon as he finishes filling that out, you can come up. And we'd like you to address the questions and that have been raised by the people in the audience.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, just, Matt, you want to get that? Yeah, thank you. All right, come on up. I presume, as you always do, you've kept notes on the issues that have been raised.
I have, yes.
Okay, so why don't you state the issue and then give the response, please?
Okay. I'm going to save the traffic part to the end because I'll speak a little bit, and then I'll defer to my expert who's here with us. So I'm going to take some of the issues that I wrote down. So loading and unloading. I heard that come up a few different times, as well as the number of delis in the area. So to speak specifically about the deli at our site. It's an existing deli at 515 Oak Street that is looking to relocate to our site. It's one of several Polish delis in the area. And there would not be any tractor-trailers involved. It would be a box truck that can either come in onto the site, and the loading area is not on Oak Street. It's, as you can see on the site plan, it's actually a whole loading area directly behind our building on our property. So that whole striped area, that's not street, that's our property behind our building. So that would be the area that they would make deliveries. However, I'm also told that since there are several Polish delis in this area, that what tends to happen is a box truck comes into town, and it parks on one of the sites, and then it uses dollys to bring some of the goods around to the other delis. And so they walk the goods using dollys around rather than coming out of one site and having to repark or re, you know, find a new space. So I thought that that was a relevant point to make, given that we do know the tenant that is coming into this site for the deli.
When does the fresh kapasi come?
I can find out for you, when that delivery date is. There was a question about future cross-access, which I believe also the planning board attorney had asked as well. The future cross-access concept, it's been around for years. I've done it in other towns as well. One that like comes to mind is out in the town of Riverhead, we did it for Lowe's. The towns are very, and even some villages are very into this concept of, especially in a downtown, creating a way that people can navigate through properties without actually going onto the roadway system. So if this worked, then we're open to it. This is something that we were asked to do. This is not our idea. Most property owners would not like people traversing on their property for a whole host of reasons, including insurance and liability. But we were asked by the town to consent to this, and we do consent to it. Would it work in theory in the future? Perhaps, but the gentleman was correct. That entire site to the south would need to be completely redeveloped, and I just don't see someone demoing, you know, a viable shopping center. So the likelihood is that would not come to fruition. In terms of the spaces that are within the building itself, and would they or could they be converted to future apartments? We are locked into our site plan and floor plan, and this building does have to still get rental permits. I believe it's every two years, they have to reapply for rental permits. And as part of their rental permit application, they have to have inspections. So if all of a sudden the gym is an apartment, the inspector is not going to be too happy, and they will be cited for that, and they will have to either, they will have to convert it back. I mean, it's just that simple. So there is still, the town still has a hand in this building. They'll be visiting this site often to inspect it. So that's the way that you kind of have.
Isn't that a new requirement, the inspections and the two-year permit? Relatively new, a couple of years ago?
It's relatively new, it's ever since the rental board came into being as well. You know, I believe if you have a residential, like an apartment in your house, I think the inspections are actually yearly, if I'm not mistaken. But on the larger buildings, just for personnel reasons, that's why they do that. On Great Neck Road, we were asked about ingress and egress. I'm going to defer to my traffic engineer, but I suppose we could talk with both planning and with the town traffic engineer to see whether a no-left turn onto Great Neck Road would be feasible. It's not necessarily something that we can decide, that's something that we have to be directed to do. And so if it was, you know, traffic coming south could come in right turn, and then traffic coming out of the site heading south could make a right turn, and then you would have to go up to Oak Street to be able to head north. You'd head out onto Oak and then head to the light. But that is something that we would have to discuss with the various town departments to see if they would approve such a thing, or if this board wanted that. I mean, that's something that can still be open for discussion. In terms of, look, the Fire Marshal's memo did not provide any objections or any concerns. We can certainly talk with the Fire Marshal's office, but without hearing those concerns, there's no way we can know to respond or address them. So I don't, unfortunately, I don't have any answers to that because we were not made aware of that issue, nor has the Fire Marshal's office said anything about that being an issue. The parking study that was done originally in 2022, that was prior to the hearing in 2023, did take into account other planned projects for the area. At the time of study, there were six other planned projects existing in this study area, five of which were on Oak Street west of Great Neck Road, and one was on Great Neck Road north of Oak Street. And so those were taken into account when the study was done. And the studies were done on both weekday mornings, weekday evenings, and then Saturday midday peak hours as well. The rest of the traffic, I will defer to my traffic engineer. I believe he has some points that he wants to make. But I did want to also address, there was a question about the number of handicap spaces. We are providing the requisite number of handicap spaces pursuant to New York State Building Code.
Okay, when were those, when was the traffic study done? You said it was done in the morning and in the evening, what time?
Yes, so between, so weekday mornings between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., weekday evenings between 4:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m., and then Saturdays midday between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. And I might be missing something, so I'd rather defer to my traffic.
Please have the expert come on up. Okay, Mr. Barry.
Good morning again, yes. Yes, I just mentioned to you, we did do the traffic study on a weekday. It was Wednesday, May 18, 2022. The counts were done at Oak Street and Great Neck Road and at 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. in the morning to cover the morning peak. And we did do the count 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. to cover the evening peak. And we also did on Saturday, May 21, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. to cover the midday Saturday peak. We did the existing conditions analysis. We also took into consideration all the other planned projects in the area that were provided to us by the town, and applied yearly growth to get to the no-builts, meaning whatever is going to be if this project is not built. After that, we did estimate the traffic that would be generated by this project using ITE. We superimposed that data into the no-builts and did do a build analysis to compare the no-building and the built to see what would be the impact of this project on traffic. Based on the results we had, the project would not significantly impact the study area in looking at what it is and what's going to be in the future when you build this project. So the increase in delay created by the project is minimal. So it does not, it does not a significant impact when it comes to the traffic study. And I also want to address the parking. Taking the shared parking from the code aside, just looking at shared parking based on the type of use, meaning we have residential, we have retail, and we have office, they all don't peak at the same time. The office does not peak at the same time as the residential, the same thing as the deli. If the office, let's say the office closes at 5:00 p.m., the parking required by the office would be zero at that point. But the residential would peak in the evening when it would come back from work or early in the morning before they leave. So looking at all that, even if you don't take credit for what the code is providing, the 20%, just taking credit based on shared parking because of the type of use, the parking required to meet the demand is 19 spaces. So 19 spaces required during the peak. The parking requirement from the town is based on simultaneous use of all the uses, assuming they all peak the same time. How many space do you need for the office, assuming they peak the same time? How many space do you need for the residential, assuming they peak the same time? How many space do you need for the deli, assuming they peak the same time? That is what came up to 31 parking spaces. But if we apply shared parking, it is not needed. We only need 19 spaces to meet the demand of the use, and 28 spaces are provided. So even if we don't take credit for shared parking from outside the site, we do have enough spaces on site to meet the demand.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
I'm sorry.
The date of the count?
Sir, sir, you have to speak to the board.
The date of the count was Wednesday, May 18, and Saturday, May 21.
Yes, I have a question. So my question for you is, I know that the site is, you know, requesting a variance of three parking spots. I believe when you came up earlier, you said you had a count of 40-something spots that were within 500 feet of the site, or something like that?
Yes.
Can you just say that again, please?
Yes, I did do that. I have, we did a parking study, and this parking study was done, let me just get the numbers clear here. We started counting from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in half-hour intervals of the parking lot that you see across the street from the site and the immediate area. And I will tell you exactly where we counted. We didn't count, we just counted within 500 feet of Oak Street, Great Neck Road, those areas. Every 15 minutes, every 10 minutes, we did that and collated all the numbers. We have at least 49 spaces available within that area that can be used if needed, including the lot and on-street. That's what I mentioned in my presentation.
Okay, so the 49 spots that you've counted and identified, are those, is that a maximum, is that a maximum number you've calculated or a minimum?
That's the minimum, at least. At least we have 49 spaces available every time of the day. So that's the minimum number of spaces available.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Go ahead. I'm sorry, for Ms. Blanda. Okay, one question I have for you, a good question that was raised by the public. How will the vehicles, more specifically, large delivery trucks or garbage trucks, sanitation trucks get on and off this property?
Okay, let me look at the plan.
Okay. Where is the garbage enclosure? Right back there?
That's the garbage, okay. So for you to go into the site, you have to go through Great Neck Road, and there's an access point right down Great Neck Road where you can go in?
Right.
Yes, that's how you go and come back out. There's.
So what you're saying, there's room?
There's room, there's room for the garbage trucks to go in there.
To turn around and go back out and go back to Great Neck Road?
Correct.
Or go onto Oak Street?
Correct, there is room. There's two-way traffic, and we have, you can circulate the site.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you can do that, there's no problem with that.
Okay.
So with that in mind, exiting, did you, did your traffic study take into account exiting and making a left?
Yes.
Going on to Great Neck Road? Because that's difficult to do.
Yes, I know. So that's why we have an access point on Oak Street. If you want to go north, you can exit on Oak Street, make a right turn, and go to the light. And also, when you look at Great Neck Road, there's a center-ton lane. It's true traffic and a center-left-ton lane before you get to the light. Yes, it's difficult to make the left turn, but you can make it, but you can still go on Oak Street and make a right turn.
Okay, Frank?
Going back to what you were just talking about, getting onto Oak Street?
Mm-hmm.
That two-way traffic there, you make that a little bigger? So that's an existing easement that's open now for traffic to use? Or will be open when it's done?
It will be open, yes.
It will be open, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other board questions? Okay, Ms. Blanda, I understand you have a question. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, who's got the question?
Ms. Blanda, can you tell me, please, for the current, the deli?
that is gonna be moving over, how many employees they currently have?
Five.
And their current hours of operation?
I believe during the week, it's 8:00 a.m. opening to about 7:00 or 8:00 p.m. at night. And then the weekend is 8:00 a.m. in the morning, and they close around 5:00.
And you said five employees?
Yes.
Thank you.
At max capacity, max shift.
Are there any other questions? No, okay. All right, thank you very much. I'm going to ask for a motion to close this hearing and to reserve decision. Motion by Frank, second by Juan.
Second.
All in favor? This hearing is closed, and we're going to reserve decision. The decision's been reserved in order for us to review the feedback we've received this evening and any open site issues or plan issues. The record will remain open for written comments. To follow up on the status of the application or submit additional written comments, you can contact the planning department in a number of different ways. One is in person. Planning is located on the west wing of Town Hall. Application documents, plans are available for inspection between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. or by phone, 631-957-3103, or via email, planningcomments@townofbabylonny.gov. Thank you very much. That concludes the public portion of our meeting.